Good evening. Welcome to the 2016 City Council Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Rio Rancho Observer and the Albuquerque Journal. I'm Mike Harren, who's managing editor of the Observer, by co-moderator, Karen Moses, who's managing editor for the Albuquerque Journal, where she spent 35 years. Our timekeeper tonight is Ricky Hayes, who's publisher of the Observer. And we want to welcome the candidates. They are from my left here, to the left here, or my left, District 1, Joanne Dudley, Joshua Hernandez, and Jim Owen. District 4, Marlene Foyer, Ron Hensley, and Ryan Parra. And from District 6, David Bency, Chris Bolzano, Councillor Lonnie Clayton, and Chris Van Hubel. So with that, we'll begin with opening statements, starting with our District 1 candidates. And Joanne Dudley, you're welcome.
When I was in high school, I was, I did everything I could to get out, and they did everything to get me out. But when I heard that they were going to kick me out, I said, "No way. I'm going to stay just to give you a rubber time." And I did, but at least I got my diploma. Well, that didn't stand well in colleges. When I got out of high school, I went to a small town and ended up in a hospital, working as a nursing assistant. And that was the time that I dedicated my life to Christ through nursing. And that, and that was on a Sunday, and then by Monday, somebody had already offered me a complete scholarship to a school of nursing of my choice. So I went in there, and I did quite well, and I'm done. But there's more to the story.
Thank you, Joanne. Joshua Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm Joshua Hernandez, and I'm running for District 1. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised on West Side Albuquerque. I graduated from Siebla High School and went on to attend both CNM and UNM. I'm currently the general manager of a local business here in Rio Rancho, and I care about the people in my district, and I care and love this city. If elected, I will bring all of my experience in the private sector, my dedication and my creativity to make our city the best I can for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Mr. Olden.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you here. I encourage you to get involved as much as you can. I've been involved in the city for, we live here for 24 years so far, and plan to probably get planted here. But whatever the case, this has been my home, and I've served in many, many different capacities, both with the school district, the city, state, and the local areas of the county. Lots of experience. You don't get this great air from not having any. So I'd like to encourage you to think about what it takes to make this a very viable District 1. It's much more important to pay attention to the immediate needs of the district's residents, and you're representing it. It's not the same as being the mayor. You're in a position where you have responsibilities to take care of everything, from barking dogs to street problems. So I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowan. Moving to District 4, Marlene Foyer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like you to start off by letting you know that I'm dedicated to the city and people of Rio Rancho. I want to make it the best place to live, work, and enjoy life. I have worked hard and will work hard as a city councillor to make life even better. I was directly involved in the incorporation of the city of Rio Rancho and served on the first city council. I was instrumental in getting our, in our own school district, and it's a wonderful school district. I was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission twice by different mayors and state councillors. I am past chairman of the Rio Rancho Chamber of Commerce. I establish Keep Rio Rancho Beautiful. I'm currently serving on the Rio Rancho Community Foundation, the UNM West Advisory Council, and the New Mexico Recycling Coalition, and the Board of Directors for the Center for Hands-on Learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Ron Hensley.
Thank you all for coming. How many District 4 voters we got? Oh, very good. Thank you all for coming out. I'm a single father of two sons. I've lived in Rio Rancho for 25 years and spent virtually my whole life within a few miles of this very spot. I'm a self-employed professional engineer. I have clients that are both public and private, and I've worked day-to-day, working with city officials, state officials, federal officials, and private clients to come up with solutions and developments that meet with the approval of the municipality and the locals. Every day, I work to come up with solutions to difficult issues, and I would like to continue to do that for the city.
Ryan Parra.
Hello. My name is Ryan Parra. I'm a 25-year-old student, a Rio Rancho citizen, and someone who wants to make a difference in this community. As a city councillor, there are three things that I would like to do that I believe will make our community stronger. Number one, I would listen to the constituents in my district, and I would bring your voices to the city council and economic groups in an effort to promote jobs and create community cohesiveness. I also hope that, as being a city councillor, that I could promote more special events within our city. I believe that we need more parades, more special events, like the pork and brewer wine festivals, and more conventions at the Santa Ana Star Center, which would promote community cohesiveness, and it would allow us to get to better know our neighbors. Finally, I would like to help grow the business district, as I said, through the use of the voice of the constituents, and listen to your suggestions and concerns, and bring those to the Sandoval Economic Alliance or the Chamber of Commerce in an effort to bring those jobs in, which would help increase our gross revenue, which would allow us to fix our roads. I hope, as a city councillor, I can create a community where people are happy to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Moving on to the District 6 candidates, Mr. Ron Bency.
Good evening, fellow candidates.
Good evening, Bency, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Fellow candidates, friends of candidates, and relatives of candidates, we've got you all here tonight. My name's Dave Bency. I'm a 30-year resident of the city of Rio Rancho. Moved here in 1985. There were 16,000 people here, and there were almost as many coyotes here at that time as there were people. I lived seven and a half years over by Lincoln Mid-School, and then we moved to Rivers Edge too. I've been a resident there for 23 years. I've served two terms on the Rio Rancho City Council. First elected in 1996, re-elected in 2000. I then went to the Sandoval County Commission for two terms, 2002 to 2010. If you go to my website, www.bencyfordistrict6.com, you'll see a litany of things that I've actually proposed and got done. And it's better for you to go to that website and look at that than for me to tell you about it. But welcome here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bency. Chris Bolzano.
Good evening. I'm Chris Bolzano. I'm candidate for District 6. I graduated from University of New Mexico with my bachelor's degree. Shortly after, I became a diplomatic officer for the State Department. While stationed here observing our country, I received my law degree and my Masters of Business Law. My wife and I, we moved to Rio Rancho, and we are raising our family here. And we enjoy the quality of life, public safety, and the education system. But we know that there is work to be done. That's when I want to come here and help the community. I want to use my 21st century experience to reverse the failed policies that past politicians in Rio Rancho have implemented. And I look forward to listening to my constituents and working for you, work hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Lonnie Clayton.
Yes, good evening. I'm Lonnie Clayton. I am the incumbent for District 6 City Council. I've spent 35 years or more in public office, working with politicians and also government officials, to work with multi-billion dollar corporations to enhance their viability and being better than what they are. That's what I've done since I've been here for 16 years, is to see to it that I put my common sense to use and work with the staff and also with the other councillors and the mayor and the city managers, of which I've known them all, to see to it that Rio Rancho became a better place to live. Common sense is where it's at, and it's not anything to do with ego. It has to do with what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. Chris Van den Huel.
Yeah, my name's Chris Van den Huel. I moved here with my family about eight years ago. For the last six years, I've been working at Los Alamos. I'm a proud member of the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union Local 412. I work in procurement at Los Alamos for the Maintenance and Site Support Division. Also, part-time instructor at CNM Applied Technologies. I'm running for this council seat because I'm tired of the constant increases in our water and sewer rates. I'm tired of the corporate welfare going on. I'm tired of our roads not being addressed. I have a website, VoteVanDenHuel, where you can see fuller explanation. But I would like to see real reallocation of our tax burden, rather than raising taxes to accomplish fixing the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van den Huel.
This first question's really just an overview question. A few of you started a little bit on it, but it gives you a little bit of a chance to talk a bit more about it. So if you could please describe what you consider to be the most important issue to the residents of your district, and how you propose to address it. And so we'll start with Joanne Dudley.
Some of the people in our district, there's been a concern with the length of the streets cause teens to be able to, and maybe other adults, to be able to really get that speed up on the streets. And some of them are wanting speed bumps. I can't find any place that that is the answer to speeding. I know that it happens. We end up replacing our own mailboxes, bushes, et cetera. I know that poverty, there in District 1, poverty is very high, very strong. There's a lot of people there that are, that don't have the funds that some of us do have. That really bothers me, and I think that we ought to at least put a hand out and attempt to help these people.
Okay, thank you. Also, District 1, we have Joshua Hernandez next.
Okay, the top three issues in District 1. As I knock doors and listen to the people of my district, roads is definitely the number one issue. The roads, as we all drive them every day, are crumbling beneath our cars. We need to find innovative new solutions, including Mr. Cog, state and federal funding, in order to be able to fix our crumbling roads. Number two is both the water infrastructure and water rates. Our district, as Joanne said, is the lowest income district in the city, and the ever-increasing water rates are crushing these people. You know, it's, am I going to pay my water, or am I going to feed my children? And that shouldn't be a decision that they have to make. Number three is jobs. You know, as I said, the poverty level in District 1 is higher than anywhere else, and we need to bring jobs, which is also, you know, retail growth, commercial growth, supporting SEA to bring in the base economic jobs that we need in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Owen.
Well, I could just say ditto, but I think what we have to be able to recognize is that the old district of District 1 basically is not just a section with a lot of low-income housing and what have you, but it also has extraordinarily expensive homes in the same district. And it's a very diverse group. You have a lot of different needs. Just for a show of hands, how many of you are District 1? Raise your hand. Okay, well, good. We're glad to see it. Because District 1 has the lowest turnout in a vote of any district in the city. So we really need to get people involved and engaged in what we need to do. Having a reserve fund settled into our budget system so that we have some way to deal with the crumbling roads is one thing, but it's also important to be able to have a working relationship with the existing funding sources, such as Mr. Cog, and also state and local. So it's very important for us to work together, and that's what the council needs more than anything else, is a cohesive group.
Thank you. Now we'll start with District 4, Marlene Foyer.
I guess it's ditto, ditto. The improvement of roads in Rio Rancho is the number one priority of District 4. In talking to residents, they all indicate that. The city did a recent survey of populations varying. In District 4, they relayed that 98% of those responding to the survey were concerned with the roads. I would suggest that those people who responded also agreed that they would support a bond issue, this first bond issue, to get us started on new road improvements. I guess the next is water rates. We've all discussed that. I also agree. I know we're ahead on the rate analysis done by the Green, Green Oak Study, that was the name of it. And it's been accomplished, and we also just received $2.1 million from the Corps of Engineers as a reimbursement. I think we don't need the next rate increase in water. Thank you.
Next is Ron Hensley.
Water rates and utility bills have been the primary concern of most of the people that I've talked to, along with the roads. And I think if people could see reduction in their utility bills, they might be a little bit more amiable to a property tax increase to fix the roads. In the past four years, the utility has increased its revenue by $10 million, and $3.5 million each year is transferred from the utility into the general fund, $1.4 million in grocery receipts tax. So that water rate increase has also resulted in increased revenue for the city, but it's taken the money out of our pockets, roughly $0.5 million. More grocery receipts tax is being paid because of the increased water rates. I think we can come up with a more comprehensive system of establishing what our capital improvements are going to be. I think we could lower the sewer rates while maintaining the water rates to encourage conservation.
Thank you. Ryan Parra.
As I talk to constituents in my district, the number one thing I hear is utilities and roads. Now, I believe that the roads, that is the most pressing issue that we need to fix in District 4. Now, the one thing everybody's probably going to wonder is, how are you going to fix the roads? Personally, I think that we should be looking at increasing the business sector and our GRT of our economy. How are we going to do this? As a city councillor, I listen to my constituents, and I've heard a lot of people say, "Mr. Par, I think we need a Sprouts," or, "You know, we need a Trader Joe's in Rio Rancho." By listening to the needs of my constituents, I would go to the Sandoval Economic Alliance or the Chamber of Commerce, and I would say, "What can I do? How can I help to bring these businesses into Rio Rancho?" Because once they're here, and our citizens know they're here, they will spend their money in Rio, which will help Rio Rancho's citizens, and it will produce GRT, which will help us not only fix our roads, but our public utilities. And that's, like I said, I believe roads are the most pressing issue, and I plan to fix it by growing our economy and voicing those concerns, as well as educating business leaders, so that way we can have a powerful and strong economy to fix and to maintain our infrastructure for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go into District 6, and we'll start with David Bency.
We have three issues in District 6, much like the other districts. Roads, water rates, and actually a growing crime rate, where people are going into those homes. Because I don't know if you know about this, but drugs are becoming rampant in our community. Marijuana use is rampant. These kids are going around stealing things, and we have a rash of car thieves going around. So we need to address that pronto. The water rates, when I was on the city council, Mr. Owens can testify to this because he was there that night, what we did was, we put our subcontractor out to bid. I had to convince one councillor to put it out to bid, just to find out what was out there. Well, we had 35 contractors bid on that utility, and we saved $3 million over the next four years. If it's one thing business hates more than regulation, it's fair competition. And the washboard roads in Unit 17, we need to get a full-time grader dedicated from Sandoval County, or else maybe we need to become our own county. Thank you.
Now, Chris Bolzano.
As I knock doors out there in District 6, here what I heard from the voters. First one, roads. That's the first issue. When it comes to that, we have to make sure that we are maintaining the roads that we already have, otherwise it becomes a cost later on. But also, we have to finish our infrastructure, the main infrastructure around our city. So we do that with Mr. Cog, federal transportation grants, and Capitol Mallway. And I look forward to fighting for every single cent to bring to our community. Second one is business. Business, what I mean by that is, people have to drive down to Albuquerque, or they are looking for economic-based jobs here. And what I look for is to work with the government body to make sure that we reduce regulation, okay? Take regulation out, update. Any regulation that's outdated is removed, so that business can grow and we can sustain our economy. And then the third one last is bakery. And I look forward to use my diplomatic background around the world to bring the government body together and get things done for District 6 before the seat of Rio Rancho. Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie Clayton.
Yes, we talk about roads. I talk about dirt roads. Unit 17 probably has about 60 to 70% of the dirt roads in Rio Rancho. The problem in conjunction with dirt roads is flooding. We've had a terrible flooding situation there for years. Apparently, District 6 is a downhill business. It's a downhill district where all the water flows down through Unit 17, down into, down into Los Rios. I've been working for several years with the Public Works Department and SCADLA to regenerate these things, like holding bases and issues like that. The other thing that is very important in District 6 is abandoned houses. I've counted over 24 abandoned houses in District 6 at this point. Abandoned houses cause all sorts of difficulty when it comes to crime rates and everything else. We're working diligently with code enforcement and the police department to get those abandoned houses taken care of. The other, the other all other issue is, excuse me. Oh, yes, one last thing. There's no restaurants in District 6. We've got to have a restaurant in District 6.
Thank you. And finally, Chris Van den Huel. Van den Huel, I'm sorry.
That's, that's all right. I like Mr. Bency's idea about the Rio Rancho County, and I think as far as roads go, we need to, rather than raise the property taxes, we need to have a reallocation made, and we need to have pressure put on Sandoval County to have our actual tax dollars work for city projects in the city. But the water and the sewer rates are just outrageous. And after you check my website, votevanthenhuel.com this evening, go to the Santa Fe Municipal website, and you'll see that the household in Santa Fe pays $6.49 a month for their sewer and sewer treatment. Dig out your water bill and see how much you pay for your water and sewer treatment. This is for all, all three districts. It's for the whole city. And to me, that's the most pressing issue, the poor planning and the mismanagement at the utility division.
Thank you. We'll begin the next round with the District 4 candidates. This is an issue that many of you just addressed. Question is, many in the economic development community believe that, quote, "Good roads bring good business," unquote. Meanwhile, homeowners in many of the city's older residential areas have seen their roads go years without proper upkeep. What can the city do to improve the quality of our existing roads and ensure it has the resources to build new projects when needed?
That gets into the subject we just spoke about, which is the priority of roads. We need to make roads the number one priority in the city of Rio Rancho. Passing the Geo Bond right now is a good start, and reissuing it every two years for the voters to have a say on whether or not their roads are improved or not is another good idea. I would propose to establish a dedicated and untouchable road fund. Money from general funds and any money generated by road bonds would be set aside for street and road maintenance. You're absolutely correct. Businesses don't like to locate on a street that's not good, that doesn't have good ingress, egress, and isn't repaired properly. I think we, as citizens, have to make that decision. And I agree that if we lower maybe some rates, we will vote for more to help our streets and roads. Thank you.
Ron Hensley.
Yes, I think the real estate agents that are showing properties in our town are tired of tracing a map of which roads they're going to take to get to that specific property so they don't have to drive over a washboard or a heavily gapped asphalt, so that if the poor condition of our roads isn't presented as part of their sales package. I would like to see a recurring roads fund. As I said, I think that people would be amiable to a nominal tax increase if they could see reductions in their expenses in other areas. I'd also like to see, examine our Public Works Department and the Streets and Wides Way Department. Most projects require lots of materials and not much labor, but our Right-of-Way Department spends the majority of its money on labor, with only, out of its $3.5 million budget, only $8,000 for materials. That's an upside-down situation that we need to look at.
Thank you. Ryan Parra.
To fix our roads, we need to do a number of things. Number one, we need a councillor who will go out and find the grants or any kind of monies available to us to repair our roads. Number two, when it comes to the bond issue, I do want to say that I do support this bond. We need to fix part of Southern, Sarah, and High Resort. However, as a councillor, I would not support a recurring two-year bond cycle. I don't believe taxing our population through property tax is the way to go. As I said, I believe the most effective way is to grow our economy. If we're going, if we can bring in more businesses to generate GRT, that will create jobs, and then it will create the monies to the city needed to repair our roads going in the future. With that said, I also do support putting aside a fund or creating a reserve that will allow us to store some of that excess money into funds that would allow us to fix our roads. And that's my, at least my opinion on the topic. Thank you.
District 6, Dave Bency.
We enacted impact fees for roads, and those, those don't go very far. Another thing we have to look at is the quality of materials, because the quality of materials some of the developers use were not as good as some, what you'd see on the state highway. So we definitely got to look at the quality of materials, because that determines how long a road will last. The city engineer I talked to the other day, we have a study by the Army Corps of Engineers that maps every collector street, major arterial and residential street in Rio Rancho, and it rates it from 0 to 100, 100 being brand-new. First off, I support the bond because we've got some really bad roads. Now, as far as the recurring portion goes, we're going to have to have a works session, look at that study, 0 to 100, and actually age some of these streets, because only by analyzing that data can we really know if we're going to have to have a recurring bond cycle. As far as the fund everybody's talking about, I'm proposing the creation of a permanent fund. And we'll put $400,000 to $500,000 in it here, and I'll tell you about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bolzano.
We all know that the seat of Rio Rancho has very limited source financial funding right. So, but money is not the only, it's not the only source we have to resolve all the problems on our city. But in this case, when it comes to road, we got to have an additional funding source so that we can sustain and maintain our road network. Now, if elected, I look forward Now, if elected, I look forward, like I said earlier, to fight for every single cent that we can bring to our city, to capital outlay, federal road grants that are available, and Mr. Cog. Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie Clayton?
Yes, I've asked this question before. Who pays? Who pays? If not you, then who? If not now, then when? I'm in favor of the bond that we have proposed on the ballot right now. I'm not so sure that I, I wanna make a judgment call right now, but we should have a rollover on that. I suggested in '03 that we do take a percentage of the G R T and lay it aside as a fund, specifically tailgated for just roads, maintenance, and repair. The bonds, the bonds coming up, will, will have to be paid for. They say, "Which roads?" Well, we take the worst first. That's the best we can do. So, my last question is, it's up to the citizens, and it's up to us, to find the best way possible to pay for these roads, because somebody's gotta do it.
Thank you. Chris Van den Hulmo?
Yeah, there is a, a road maintenance allocation in the city budget that the current majority on the council has let, they've actually cut it, it was up to a million dollars a couple of years ago. And that money goes to fix all your roads, not just rebuild this road or that road. It goes to fix all your roads. And if you, you can say you're gonna allocate money, or you're gonna dedicate money, but it takes political will. And what the current council majority has done, in lieu of fixing your roads and, and building up that road allocation fund, is they've done, they've taken money out of that for their other, other pet projects. And so, yeah, the, the bond issue is a small start to a very big problem. And like I said earlier, the, the whole property tax burden needs to be re-looked at and reallocated, and get some meaningful money into the roads.
Thank you. Moving to District One, Joanne Dudley?
Hey, my husband worked his entire career for the Federal Bureau of Highways, we always called it the Bureau. And the one thing he impressed on me is, do it right the first time. And a lot of our roads weren't done right the first time. We need to go back, they need to be done properly. If we have to start over and tear some of those up, which is what we would have to do, patching doesn't work any better than when we patch a pair of jeans. It doesn't make them last too much longer. These roads have to be taken out, and if it takes the bond election, we're gonna have to pay for it, because they have to be improved. We've got to come up with the funds for it, whether we get grants, taxes, however, we can do it. We've got to fix those roads, because they are crumbling.
Thank you. Joshua Hernandez?
All right, so Rio Rancho is kind of in a catch-22 right now. We need the roads to be fixed to get the business, but we need the businesses to be able to raise the G R T and funds to fix the roads. So in order to, you know, innovative solutions, you know, I do support the bond. The bond is, you know, seven dollars and thirty cents on my house is a lot cheaper than the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars I just spent to get my car realigned. You know, I don't support or not support the reoccurring bond, but I think it's something to look at in a year or two years. A road fund could be a good idea, but where does that money come from? Our budget is so low already, can we really take half a million dollars a year and put it into a road fund, over and over and over again? I think the biggest thing is looking at the federal level, and also making relationships with people at Mr. Cog, to help get Rio Rancho the money it needs to fix our roads.
Thank you. Jim Owen?
Well, the bond issue is obviously a hot item. It's one of these things that we've gotta support right now, but I would tell you, the history shows us the reason why we had the bond issue last time got turned down was because we had a city government that basically diverted funds that were supposed to be done for a road repair for, throughout the entire city, and they used it to build a road to nowhere for Green Two V. This does not build confidence in your governing body. And what we have to have is, we've gotta have people who are sincerely dedicated to making the right choices, and there are gonna be some tough choices that have to be made. But you can't expect people to support something when you have that kind of a history. Let's encourage people to vote for the bond, but at the same time, we need to grow up, and we need to get sincere people in place who have the integrity to have this job, and not just to stay in the things that make people happy.
Thank you. So now we move on, and the next question deals with money as well, and limited resources. And it focuses on the Santa Ana Star Center, which is now in its tenth year, yet it remains a painful financial burden on the city's limited resources. So looking at that, I mean, it's still spending the city millions of dollars in operating costs and debt service. So looking ahead, what are your thoughts on the possibility of selling the Star Center to a private sector entity, even at a significant one-time loss, so the city can refocus all of its energies on the fundamental priorities? And for this, we're gonna start with District Six, and we'll start with David Bensy.
I think you could put it up for sale, but I don't think anybody will buy it, because in order for somebody to be interested to buy it, they have to be making a profit already. And I don't know, but there was Jeff Dunham, was here, the comedian, he had this character, Walter, and Walter got up there and says, "I got a problem. You got this place way out in the middle of nowhere, and you only got one friggin' road to it." And so, I don't think it's possible that we can sell it. I think we're gonna have to pay off the debt over the next twenty years, and, and go around it as best we can, and, and try to make it an anchor, because eventually that will be paid off, and, and it might be able to be turned into a profit center. I, I just think that's kind of pie in the sky right now, especially with Albuquerque talking about making one for their own. So, you can look into it, but I don't really see that happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bolzano?
That building should never have been built. It's a drain for the city budget. But the problem is there. We got to do something. As a father of two kids, I'm always looking for entertainment, and I don't wanna go down to Albuquerque every single time. I wanna do an activity, a good activity with my family. So I feel that, with that building there, we can work together to bring family events, Christian events. And by doing so, families just like mine, that live in the district, they can have a place to go. They don't have to drive down Albuquerque. And that's what I look forward, to work together with the government body, work together with the entertaining industry, bring family events, and that will sell out, and we can save money as a community, as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie Clayton?
Yes, there's already been opportunities for people to come out and browse and take a look at the arena, and the answer was, no, they don't wanna buy it. Nobody wants to buy it, nobody wants to lease it, nobody wants to rent it. We've had about three, maybe even four managers take over that place, outside agencies have come in and taken it over. The agency they have now has been doing a pretty darn good job of at least keeping the, the ongoing operational costs down. They've reduced the operational cost to a level that is compatible now. We still have to pay the two-point-three million for the yearly budget, and you'll have to pay for that until the building is paid for. But as far as that's concerned, we're just gonna have to live with it, and go forward in the hopes that this new management agency will certainly continue what they're doing, and at least reduce our operational costs, so that we don't have to get stuck both ways.
Thank you. Chris Van den Hulmo?
Yeah, you're stuck with that. It's costing three million dollars with the debt and the loss, and you're stuck with it because of the poor planning. And this is a good time to bring up opportunity cost, because that's three million dollars that the city could be spending on your roads instead, or something else. And that brings me to the sewer plant that almost got passed, it's a forty-year-old plant that needs to be shut down, there's an alternative plant nearby, and we almost spent, borrowed twenty-five million dollars to build that. And so you would've had two white elephants in Rio Rancho. And that, to me, was the final straw, and that's why I got in this race, because we don't need to burden the, the citizens and the future citizens of Rio Rancho with, with another white elephant. People borrow twenty-five million dollars and say, "Oh, don't worry about it." Well, there's an opportunity cost besides the expenditure on the building or the plant itself.
Thank you. Now move on to District One, Joanne Dudley?
Okay, yes, we're stuck, but I also have heard some groups have backed out. Is that, we, I guess we do have at least doubt, but there should be a little bit more action as far as bringing other groups in. It could be used for basketball, I know of at least one rodeo that was there. I don't know if it's the advertisement, I don't know what it is, but people really aren't happy with going out there on that road, in, going out to the Star Center. We are stuck, and it's going to have to be paid for, so, I don't know, we just need to be, I think, more aggressive in getting, having it used. I don't know that there's that much usage, really, of the center.
Joshua Hernandez?
Okay, so, we can shut it down, and it becomes an eyesore for our city, and we still get stuck with our bond payment. And we can sell it and have no control over what the new people do with it, and we still will get stuck with our bond payment. If we sell it, it's gonna be pennies on the dollar, it's not gonna be enough to come anywhere close to making the bond go away. So we're stuck with it. You know, we need to get behind the Star Center a little bit more. I believe that we need to lift some restrictions and give leeway on the shows that are allowed to be brought in, and find new resources to bring in more ticketed events, which will then make the Star Center sustainable. Thank you.
Jim Owen?
We're not stuck, okay? What we are is, we are victims of a bad decision by previous administration to not pursue a master plan for that site. Rio Rancho has one of the biggest opportunities on the planet. It owns the entire hundred-and-sixty acres of city center, which we are doing nothing to promote. We could actually give the land away and get other businesses in there, and it's disappointing me to watch how very little is being done to make the city center an attractive place. It's not just the event center. There's the opportunity, we've got the university, you've got the hospital, you've got all these other kinds of draws, and what we're doing right now is, we're not using our utilities in a way that makes a difference where we can actually get some real G R T in that place. And it's not just the event center, it's the entire project that was master-planned and screwed over by a previous administration.
Okay, thank you. Now moving on to District Four, we'll start with Marlene Foyer.
I don't wanna be repetitive, I don't wanna use the word "stuck." I don't have a solution. I mean, we can mitigate it a little bit, I think this past year, we've had some better shows, and they brought in more revenue. The only suggestion I would have, because it's not my area of expertise, because we are a sports-centric city. We have Cleveland, we have Rio Rancho, we have football, basketball, all of that. To bring more of the young families together, not just the little kids, but the teenagers, things like that, and people who are interested in sports. I also believe that we need to do more advertising to the metro area. We've gotta get away from, "I'm not going up the hill," and entice people with some shows, and, those are only thoughts, but I do not have a solution. I apologize.
Ron Hensley?
Obviously, it's impossible to come up with such a, a solution for such a grave mistake. The center is gonna be losing money for some time. Now, we've made some progress at covering the operating revenue, but it's still bravely We don't have a solution, as we all see. The only thing that's gonna help is if we can increase the attractions that are around the center, and, for those attractions and destinations to develop around the center, we need more development around the center in population and in commercial. We need to set up development districts adjacent to the city center, where we can encourage commercial and residential development to try and get enough population out there to support some facilities.
Thank you. Ryan Pata?
There's a lot of negativity on the Star Center, but I just have to ask, why can't it be positive? There are solutions, and as I said when I opened my statement to all of you tonight, one of the things I'd like to do with the Star Center is, I wanna bring back some more community events. I think that if we were to get more things like the Winter Parade at Santa Ana Star Center, we were to bring back community events, community affairs, we were to bring more pork and brews or wine festivals, people would be willing to go to the center, and they would spend money, which would support the center, and it would generate the city money. And, I mean, honestly, we have such an opportunity. I mean, sure, right now, it looks like a lump of coal, but that's a diamond in the rough that we have sitting there. And we need to utilize it, and we need to envision a better use of the venue than what it is right there. Like I said, I believe community events are the way to go. I have never heard of a community saying, "Well, I have too many parades, I have too many family events in my community, what a horrible thing." I think if we wanna grow, and we wanna continue to be the city of vision, we need to envision a place where our families are happy to live, work, and play, and that is the Santa Ana Star Center.
Thank you. I'm gonna return to District One to start the next question. Over the past two years, council business was often sidetracked by disagreements that descended into mean-spirited exchanges among members of meetings and in newspaper columns. What would you bring to the council to restore a culture of civility and promote the spirit of compromise? Joanne Dudley?
Well, I know that it was reported that I walked out of a meeting in disgust, and I did indeed walk out of a meeting. I don't know who said it, I don't know anything about it. The facts were, I think, maybe we aren't getting all the facts out. The facts were, I had to leave because I have a legally-blind daughter, and I was simply, no, I wasn't looking around and waving, I was simply with my head down, trying to guide her down the steps, et cetera. And, hey, maybe that's an excuse, but I think maybe we look at people and we make assumptions, and that does cause disagreements, arguments, and I think we need to act a little bit more civil and understanding towards other people.
Thank you. Joshua Hernandez?
I believe that disagreements and bickering that have happened at city council makes our city look bad. There's disagreements are gonna happen, but we need to stop making it like a drama TV show. We need to understand that we're not gonna agree on everything, but we need to be civil and do it away from the TV cameras and the public, and make it seem to outside people and commercial and new residents, that we can get along and pass what is best for our city and continue the growth. Thank you.
Jim Owen?
No one is ever gonna be in a situation where we're not agreeing, right? If we have data-driven decisions, and we're not involved in personalities, we obviously can move things forward. I've always wanted to have the data in front of me, and if I don't have that information in a detailed way, then we need to have work sessions, which we used to have, and we required them on a regular basis, so that we could hammer out the differences without any decisions being made, so that there'd be more cohesiveness on, on the council. And that's entirely easy to do, it's just a matter of what you... And that's entirely easy to do, it's just a matter of what, you can't be in a place where you get so set in your position that you're just gonna put your feet in concrete, and I'm, you know, it's my way or the highway, and what you do is you do it in public, and as a result, you're gonna have, become a laughingstock to some people, and that's something we can't afford in the city, and we need to get together and behave like adults.
Before I start the question, maybe we could start at the other end of our districts, so I don't give all my stuff away. All right. And I feel this, differences of opinions, and I have attended, I would say, 95% of the council meetings in the last couple of years. You can have different opinions, you want different opinions on your city council, so everything gets vetted out. But it shouldn't be taken personally, and the back and forth makes our city council, our governing body, I should say, very unprofessional, acting like adults, use the word. Someone I know recently said, "We need you on the council, we need an adult on the council." I think I can be an adult on the council. I know how to work with people, I know how to compromise when it's necessary, and I know how to stand my ground when it's necessary. Maturity, that's all it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Hensley?
In my four years on the Utility Commission and two years as its chair, I received my own share of that condescension and ascension, but I worked through it, and through many of the issues that faced the Utility Commission, I worked with the councilors that may not have been complimentary, but you work past it, you take opposing point of views and communicate. You communicate your point of view, and you allow the communication of the other point of view, and you negotiate. That's what I did when I was on the commission, that's what I did after I left the commission and the Utility Commission ordinance. Solutions can be reached as just communication.
Thank you. Ryan Per.
Well, there's two things. Number one, we do need better communication. I think that we may need to look in the future, getting an extra work session or two, that way the government body can have a chance to sit down and really examine what's at, you know, what the forefront of the issues are, and we can talk about these things. And one of the things that I would say, that I'm proud to say, one of the most important lessons my father ever taught me was that you value another person's opinion. You might not like it, but you need to respect it, because that's their opinion, not yours. More importantly, just because someone has a different opinion doesn't mean we can't work together, and that's one of the things I would like to bring to the councils, that everyone's different, we all have our strengths and we all have our weaknesses. Digging our feet into the sand and being hard-headed will not get us anywhere, and we've proven that the last four years. We don't need any more of that. What we need is people who will look to each other and recognize that this councillor has an asset or a strength that I don't have, and I have the same. One of the things that I've learned going to school for political sciences, political leadership, is having the courage, the clarity, and the strategic vision, and realizing you don't have all the answers, and sometimes someone else might to make the city better.
Thank you. Moving to District Six, David Vincy?
I've said that at a previous meeting, there's number one rule in Oklahoma that goes something like this, you don't wrestle with pigs for two reasons. One, you get dirty and filthy and muddy, and two, the pigs like you. So, given that, you gotta understand, there are rules and orders and procedures that are in the handbook, okay? And the man sitting right over there with the blue suit on with the tie, he's in charge of that meeting, and in the policies, procedures, it says, "There shall be no personal attacks." Point of order, there will be no more personal attacks. We need to put policymaking back in the driver's seat, and personalities back in the backseat, and the car will drive itself.
Thank you. I don't need that for a minute. Thank you. Chris Palzano?
My wife and I, we are tired and annoyed by the bickering at city council. We go there, she looks at me and I look at her, and it's just really annoying. And I have been thinking about that, and with my years working for the State Department as a diplomatic officer, I have been all over the world, in places where conflict and bickering was there, and I had to negotiate, I had to let it, I had to work together and bring innovative ideas for the municipality, and I feel that with my diplomatic background, I can do that here. As, if elected as a councillor for District Six, I look forward to bring all my experience as a diplomatic officer and be a team player, but the only way that's gonna happen in District Six, if it is, if you place somebody near flash flood with innovative and creative ideas for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie Clayton?
Well, looks like I'm the dirty bad guy in the crowd. You don't have a remote over here. I spent my first two years in city council, working diligently with three other councillors, and we accomplished some great things, we really did. We did some wonderful things in recalling old ordinances and creating new issues for area plans, the whole nine yards. And then there was a change in the complexion of the council, and in '14, we had three other councillors come along, and I realized that my thought processes of common sense and decency worked better to work with these other three councillors than it was to stay with the three councillors that I was with before. I did that. I used common sense, I didn't try to get into these gunfights, I even stood around and told some of the people, said, "Look, we're accomplishing nothing by having these gunfights. We don't do anything except make us all look bad." As far as I'm concerned, I think I did an honorable job, and I'm proud of what I did. And I'd like to see to it that you all vote for me, because I plan to go ahead and continue to do the same job.
Thank you. Chris Van den Hooft?
This is like, what to do with the Star Center? Insolvable problem. The only way you can stop bickering is tell people to act like adults and leave it at home, and if they refuse to do that, then the only thing you can do is replace them. I don't plan on making speeches, I don't like making speeches, I like making policy decisions, I like working for the retired families and the working families, so they quit getting the shaft every time the council meets and decides something, but I'm not gonna criticize people for their point of view. Doesn't do any good, and if you do watch those council meetings, you see certain members actually enjoy belittling the other members that they disagree with. I don't know how you solve that. Maybe, maybe, maybe like Mr. Vincy said, a stronger... Stop.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to the next question, and it's really dealing with the population and the change, and the fact that Rio Rancho already has more than 10,000 people over the age of 65, and has many more who are over 40, or over 55, many retirees. The Metal Arc Senior Center is bursting to scenes with over 4,000 members. So would you support a bond issue to build either another senior center or a multi-generational center? And if not, how do you propose that you address the quality of life issue in the city's increasing senior population? We're gonna start with District Four, and yes, I'm sorry, Marlene Foyer, we're starting with you, but we tried to get out of order now, I'm afraid we leave somebody off completely.
Well, I appreciate the consideration. I am a member of the Metal Arc Senior Center. It is crowded, they have great activities, the people go in there, enjoy it, they love it. It's very, very positive for the people who go to the center. But it's in the far south of our city, and the rest of the city is kind of left out of that. I think a multi-generational facility is a good alternative, because I like mixing youth with us older. I think it gives us vitality and all of those kinds of things. Boys and Girls Club is wonderful, the Senior Center is wonderful. Let's combine that kind of energy together. Would I support a bond issue? I'd vote to put it on a ballot, and it's up to you to decide if that's what you want. It's not up to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Hensley?
I think senior services is one of the most important aspects of our safety, right behind police, fire, public safety. It's one of the entities, the senior services, that helps out the segment of our population that needs the most help, just like our public safety department. I think they need increased funding, and I think a multi-use facility would be appropriate. I think the hard part is we're placing it in our wide-spread city that would get enough use. As Marlene said, our senior center is in the far south end of the city, and still is receiving 4,000 members. I think we can find a location closer to the center that would be a multi-use facility.
Thank you. Ryan Pata?
I love the idea of a multi-use facility, personally. I mean, I could see the seniors getting use out of it, I could see them putting in a basketball court, tennis court, and I could see that you have younger kids, maybe even teenagers. I see it as a great opportunity, as I've said many times, to bring our community and everyone together. I mean, anything that brings the community together, I'm for, I say, "Let's do it." For the bond, I'm a little torn, I don't like the idea of raising property taxes, and honestly, that's where I've said I would listen to my constituents. If I have enough constituents that feel a bond is the best way to go, it's my job as a city councillor to relay their wishes to the board, or not to the board, but to the city council, and, I mean, that's the best way to go about it. I'm gonna have to know more and have to listen to my constituents to really make a decision on the bond. As for a center, I think we need another one, we really desperately do.
Thank you. Moving on to District Six, David Vincy?
Okay, back to reality. A multi-generational center would be referred to by most people in this town by the F-word. Do you know what the F-word is in Rio Rancho? It's fluff. We can't get 7% of the people to turn up to vote for city council and vote on roads that are crumbling. How do you think we're going to get them to vote for the F-word? Here's how we do it. We put the roads on bond issues, because if people don't want to drive on roads, you know, they don't want to raise their taxes, they drive on dirt roads, and they pay for alignments and everything else, and new tires. Fine, they decide with that. What we do is around the city center, is we get together with a bunch of developers, we don't have the tool of redevelopment anymore, but we get them to buy up a bunch of land and create a special assessment district, and within this special assessment district, we do a PIT, Public Improvement District, of which they are commanded, "You shall do a multi-generational center," and that cost is divided among those new homeowners, and everybody else pays an additional fee to use it. That's how we do it. Thank you.
Chris Palzano?
I completely understand that the needs for seniors are very similar for the family. We got to have a place to go and, you know, and entertain ourselves and be together. But also, I don't want to bring that to my children, they're gonna be here in the future. So I think we should focus on the private sector. I know that WCA, they own property here in Rio Rancho, and that would be one instance where we can work together, using my private sector experience, working together with the government body, to have them build something here. And there is all the companies in the private sector that would be willing to bring that service to our community, and I look forward to work together with the government body to look on that, less that, bring the private sector, and let them do that. Thank you.
Next, Lonnie Clayton?
2003, when I was on the city council, the councils, they all had $50,000 in discretionary funds, you could spend it the way you want it. I took $6,000 of that, along with the director of public library and the director of the senior center, who is still the director, Debbie Brogdon, we put through a survey to see where would be best suited to put in a senior center. We found the spot, it was perfect, it was city property, we made all sorts of good things on it, we saw to it that we would be able to build it, but then we had to figure out how to fund it. Well, that takes time. Unfortunately, I was out of office at the end of 2003, and the council that followed me chose to spend that money for science broadcasting where River District 1, 2, and 3 was located, and that died. It didn't happen. I agree with councillor Vincy, the area around City Hall or the PIT would be a logical way to go, and put the private sector involved in it, get the business owners into it, and see to it that we buy it and take care of it, because we can certainly get that kind of support. Thank you.
Chris Van den Hooft?
I would support a senior center or something like that. After all, the city owes it to them. The last four years, seniors have gotten a whopping 3% cost of living raise, while our city council has raised their water fees 50%. So, in a way, we kind of owe it to them to treat our seniors with some dignity and respect. I have no problem voting for a bond for the seniors. But then again, you know, I go back to opportunity costs. When you waste money on other projects, you don't have projects like the senior center or the, where my daughter used to go put on the plays at the Metal Arc Center, the kid center. That's quality of life, that should, that should be funded.
Thank you. Now District One, Joanne Dudley?
Hey, we've talked about the Metal Arc Senior Center and how great it is, how many people are involved there, and we're talking about the Santa Ana Star Center sitting idle a lot of the time, and it's a money-losing proposition. Would it work? We would need something more over on that side of town anyway. What do you think about that? I mean, that might be a good solution, and we're spending money out there anyway, let's put a little bit, maybe direct it into the seniors. I don't know of any seniors personally, but, but I believe that might be a good thing to consider. We also said that there was land out there that we owned that possibly could be used for that. Just some thoughts.
Thank you. Joshua Hernandez?
So, we all know the Metal Arc Senior Center is over-crowded. Every time I drive by, the parking lot's full, whenever you go in there, there's people everywhere. I believe that building a new multi-generational facility would be the best bet. Let's get the younger generation and the older generation together and have them teach each other and hang out with each other. My favorite times as a kid was talking to my grandparents and listening to the stories. There's nothing quite like it. I believe that we should, that it should be built up in northern somewhere or over in city center. We have lots of land all over the place, let's use some of it. As for funding it, I believe that we should go for state funding, for capital LDA funds, and not bring another bond onto the city. District One residents cannot afford another bond. Thank you.
Jim Owen?
Well, obviously, we've seen the senior center go from very small operation to what it is today, and it's obvious that you go from the small town that we were to almost the third, the second largest city in the state with 90,000-plus people, it is gonna change. But one of the things I think we also have to recognize is one of the sources of income that we need to bring into the city, we have missed the boat on, and that is retirees. Okay, it's income when they come here to retire, and we really should be focusing on trying to get those folks here, because that's income with no impact to our infrastructure. And that's something that would help to build a GRT in a way that is an amazing generator. All you gotta do is go take a look at some of the senior centers over in Arizona, if you want to see where money can be made, and we could then fund something like that as part of that development, and it would be a good thing for everyone.
Thank you. Start in District Six this time.
Start in District Six this time with this question. What is your position concerning the proposal by an Oklahoma-based company to drill an exploratory production well in Sandoval County just west of the Rio Rancho's city limits? Dave Vency?
Thank you. First off, that's in Sandoval County, so it's actually up to their jurisdiction now that we don't have a say in it. First off, there's got to be due diligence by the county to check on the background of that company, and I've heard they've already done some due diligence. And that company has a shoddy background. So right there, that's strike one. Two, they're gonna take 265,000 gallons of fresh water to drill that well. I told one of the guys related to that project, I said, "No. What you do, I don't want a drop of fresh water used out of our aquifer for that. You go five miles west there where the county already drilled a 10,000-foot well with brackish water, and you use that. You buy it dirt cheap, you use it, not one drop of fresh water." Three, even if they were to hit oil and everything like that, the prices are so low, I don't think they could pump it up and make anything. If they did, what I would do is I'd annex it, put a surcharge on it, and throw it into my permanent fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bazano?
The oil and gas industry, if it's done properly, it can reverse the economy really quickly. But before that, it's hard to understand who is doing that. Is that gonna be done properly or not? So that's where it comes two things. We need to figure out the reputation of the company. What's the history behind? What exactly have been done up there? And also, research and analysis. Figure out, is there oil? What are the risks? And having those two things in hand, then decisions can be made. But above all, what I stand is to protect our families, make sure that their investment and their asset is protected because we are investing in our city. And second, is our aquifer. We got to make sure that that is safe. So that's what I stand when it comes to the oil drilling. Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie Clayton?
I've been upset about this since I went to that very first meeting out in the county building. The state commissioner came in, and he was asked a question very simply. "What do you have for controls to handle a thing like this?" And his basic answer was, "Well, not very much. We can assess them $50,000 if they have a problem." Well, $50,000 on a blowout wouldn't pay for the time of day. And then the people from the oil company came up, and they said, "Well, they were going to ask for some water." Well, the water that they proposed to the city was 250,000 gallons if they wanted to use. The water they proposed out of that meeting was 800,000 gallons of water. I don't see anything logical here because I keep seeing the song and dance about who's in charge and who's responsible. The county wasn't able to get any controls put on. The city hasn't put any controls on because it's in their county property. But what really frustrated me was the state level. Now, we understand that the state lives with oil, but when you don't know anything about it, then you got a problem.
Thank you. Chris Van den Huyvel?
Like was mentioned, that company has a less-than-stellar background, and I think for that reason alone, if they could ensure covering of any damage they did, I don't think it'd be a very good idea to give them a permit.
Thank you. Moving to District One, Joanne Dudley? Okay, I'm sorry. It's my understanding that the reputation is not good, that they didn't have all their paperwork together, so they weren't quite sure how to even approach the paperwork on it. Plus, they wouldn't be using fresh water. It would be, what is it, from the aquifer? So I don't know that they even know how to approach it. I'm not sure that they would be, if it were even done, that they would be the company that should do it.
Joshua Bernandes?
Okay, so look at it this way. Sandoval County right now has over 1,000 wells drilled. Currently, over 650 of them are producing oil. I believe that if we do let someone drill, whether it's Sandoval County, which we have no control over, or in the city, that we need to make sure and put regulations and strict standards on whichever company happens to do it to protect the water, the land, and most importantly, the citizens of our city. Now, the company that's coming through to do this does not have a great reputation, and they are staking the future of their company on drilling in Sandoval County and Rio Rancho. They have a horrible record in Oklahoma, and I don't believe that we should let them into our city. Another company, maybe, someone with a better safety record, because oil drilling in the city can increase our economy and our GRT exponentially, and I'm told to stop.
Thank you. Jim Owen?
Well, it was voted down by the planning and zoning of the county. It was a six-zero, no-go vote. And the reason why this was really critical is because the county does not have any ordinances in place to actually deal with this issue whatsoever. So by turning it down, the commission basically put them in a position now where the commissioners can, in fact, install the ordinances necessary to protect us from bad judgment. And they couldn't even meet the bond issue, and so it was very obvious that these are not the players we'd like to have in the area. Fracking is a concern for a lot of people because of natural gas and the idea of contamination possibilities with the water table. So there's a lot of people who are very, very concerned about this in the western part of Rio Rancho with good reason, and I think we should always be cautious.
Thank you. Moving to District Four, Roland Ford?
On Sandridge, besides Sandridge, reputation. I believe the points are that our regulations aren't in place to deal with this at a county level. It is my understanding, speaking with city staff, that the city of Rio Rancho is in the process of developing an ordinance that would help regulate these kind of industries. I worked in the industry for many, many years and ran three landfill statewide. I understand the protection of the aquifer. The company I ran was one of the most highly-regulated enterprises in all of the state. Without proper bonding, performance bonding, and pollution protection, we're totally against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Hansley?
My frustration with this project is I feel like we've dropped the ball in when we should have been informed about it and when we should have been educated about it. When I was on the utility commission, I tried to express to staff the importance of any drilling operation within vicinity of our aquifer for any purpose should be carefully examined and scrutinized. Objections to any facility that's not going to be acceptable within our community should be objected to at the state level when the permit was applied for. I was very discouraged that it was basically last minute to try and organize some type of protest for a zoning change. The appropriate time to address the issue was when the drilling permit was applied for. I don't blame attacking an industry just because of the industry they're in. I think there are safe ways to do it, and it can be accommodated with our community.
Thank you. Ryan Per?
Many know that I'm a student, and as a student, the majority of my classes have actually been environmental policy, oil and gas, and mineral extraction. I actually hope to one day have a career in that field. With that said, I can't support Sandridge. I mean, I am somebody who is pro-mining and pro-oil, but I cannot with a clear conscience support a company that has a terrible reputation. I mean, I feel that it would be a liability to this community. I could not look anyone in the eye with any sense of morals or ethics and say, "Yes, I believe this is a good investment. This is a good company to bring to our community." I can't do that. Now, on the topic of oil, if there was another company with a better record that wanted to come in and explore, depending on the reputation, depending on their regulations, and depending on the impact they had on their communities, I would be receptive and go listening. And one of the things that I've said is, if Sandridge does come in, they're gonna probably more than likely be using city utilities. I would say at some point...
As been stated, the PDV extension is going to be a vital industrial requirement for the city. The connection to the east-west federal transportation corridor is going to be a necessity for any industry that wants to locate here. However, the development of the project is right about the 25-year horizon of the long-term transportation plan. And that's about where it belongs because that's when the demographics and economic situation of Rio Rancho will actually make it a viable project. If any construction of it prior to then, it's gonna be a bypass, and we can wait with the trucks as they go by and the people headed north, but it's not gonna benefit us until we get an economic base and an industry base that will actually be able to utilize the roadway. And I agree that any city expenditures in this effort is premature.
Thank you. Ryan Pata?
When it comes to Pasel de Volcan, I mean, it's a priority, but it's not one of our top priorities. One of the things that I've been paying attention with Pasel de Volcan is many people in my district, many people across the city say, "You know, we need economic-based jobs." Since I was a little kid, the things I've heard is, I've heard people say, "Well, I made a living working in a factory. I made a living manufacturing products and goods." Well, when it comes to manufacturing, you need a factory, and no one wants a factory right down the street from them. They don't want it next to their house. So the only logical place for us to put it is out somewhere where there's not a lot of current housing. That would be the industrial park where Pasel de Volcan is proposed to go through. I would work with the city. I'd work with county. I'd work with state leaders to try to come up with funding so we could see if Pasel de Volcan come to fruition. Should that road come to fruition, we will have access to highways which will allow us to move north and south quickly, and it will bring the economic-based jobs that this city desperately needs to grow in the next 10, 20, or even 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to District Six, David Vency?
Currently, I think we need to work on city funding to make sure Broadmore gets done to the city center. That's something we can't control. PDV, we cannot control. But what we need to do is we need to get in line. First off, simultaneously, we need to get it on the list and make Albuquerque aware that it will help develop everybody because a lot of their west side is growing too. So they would get economic gain from it. Also, we need to get Santa Ana Pueblo on wall because right now it dumps into 550. That is a mess. We need to get it to go around Santa Ana Pueblo to where they can make money off of it also because last I saw, that casino's still making a lot of money. Now, the problem is funding of this. Last I checked, the federal government's in debt for about $20 million at the state in New Mexico, its highest unemployment rate. Gas and oil is going down. And when I was on county commission, we gave $8 million to a train. And I said, "Those costs are not known." And this year, according to Albuquerque Journal, Department of Transportation is spending $125 million to subsidize that train. That's where our road money went too.
Chris Bazano?
Pasel de Volcan is a project that's gonna take years. And yes, when it's done, it will connect us with I-25. It will bring economic growth to our community. However, I don't believe that the cost of Pasel de Volcan should rest on the shoulders of Rio Rancho residents. That's not right. We have to make sure that the communities around it that have more money are paying their share on that project. And with our money, we invest to maintain the roads that we already have there and finish critical infrastructure in our community. Thank you.
Next, Lonnie Clayton?
PDV will be handled by the feds. That's what it's all about. I've been a member of Mid-Region Council of Governments for four years, and back in over three, I was a member then. They have it on their 2040 plan, their 2040 plan. But the thing that I always want to bring forward to people is this. If you want manufacturing companies to come to town, you have to have access to their raw materials in and their finished goods out. We do not have a rail siding here, unfortunately, but this would be a very viable way to think about this for the future, of being able to have economic development go forward with manufacturing companies to come in with that access road that would tie them to I-25 and I-40. That's where it lies. So the long and short of it is, it's a long-term project. We don't have any ties to it. It's gonna be federal money that's gonna start the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Van den Huyvel?
Very low priority. Southern is not District Six, but I end up going on there all the time. Go to the movies, go to the stores. And it's sad to see that that street look like it is. And I think that should be probably Rio Rancho's top road priority in terms of the massive project that requires bonds. But again, I would go back to Maintenance Road Allocation Fund that the city council, the President's City Council has slashed the budget, and that's money for your road and my road, not just one particular big project road. So to answer your question, low priority for Pasel de Volcan and a high priority for Southern.
Thank you. Average voter turnout, the percentage of registered voters who actually voted in the last four municipal elections, has ranged between 8 and 10%. City Rio Rancho's not alone, obviously. CNN APS election last week drew well, under 10%. What are your thoughts on the possibility of converting future municipal elections to a mail-in ballot, to remove all remaining obstacles between voters and their vote? Charlie?
I just asked somebody this question about, I remember voting once in Rio Rancho by mail, one time, and we did. We got probably 25% return. It was wonderful. People spoke. I would favor it. I know it's gonna cost more money, but that, people have a right to vote. Well, they should vote. It's an obligation as well, but you've got to make it convenient. People are busy. You know, the average family's got two working families. They're working, they have to go to games or music lessons with the kids. So anything we can do to encourage more voting in our community, even if it costs us some money, I think it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Hansley?
Well, our city's actually been at the forefront in helping voters get up to vote. We've got convenience centers, early voting at the library. You can absentee vote without any reason at all, which is a mail-in election. Whereas other municipalities require you to have a reason to get your absentee ballot, you can just get one and vote at your letter. And I think the mechanisms that the city has put in place provide the most advantageous voter turnout possible. It's hard to fight apathy and discouragement, and we need to get people encouraged and involved.
Thank you. Ryan Per?
Who in their right mind would say, "No, I don't want people voting"? That's a crazy answer. Part of being in this city, or even in general, being in this country, we are given the ability to vote for anything. We are able to vote on our bonds, our elected officials. We even get to vote on the curriculum changes for our children. So anytime that people can be more involved and the people can have a better voice, I would be for. I mean, honestly, can you really sit here and put a price on picking your future elected officials? There's 10 of us up here on the stage. Can we really put a price and say how much it's worth so that you can pick who you want to represent you? So if it comes to doing mail-in ballots, I would be for it. Like I said, anything that gets the people to vote and gets them more informed, I would happily support.
Thank you. Moving to District Six, Dave Vency?
I would agree with mail-in voting. We've done it on bond elections before. The only question I have is security about... The only question I have is security about it, because people would have questions regarding voter fraud. WFC feels one saying, anything worth having is worth cheating for. I mean, I think eventually, well, everybody should vote online, but the question is security of voting online. So I'm for that. Another thing that might work, that I always tell people, shame works sometimes, do you remember the Purple Thumb people? Don't you find it amazing that in Iraq, the first election, those people could vote in open elections? 85% of the people showed up, not knowing whether they would be gunned down or blown up by a car bomb? And we get 7% turnout? What's wrong with this picture? So I think we need to do a better job in our schools educating kids that it's a right to vote, but it's also a duty to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bazana?
Severed the country abroad, I have been in a lot of places where fraud or the opportunity to vote was not available. Fraud was high, and that was really sad. But we are in America, and I am for anything we can do to be able to engage the voters, be able to give them the opportunity to vote. When it comes to the ballot and elections, I just want to make sure that it is monitored and is secure, so that we can prevent any fraud. But aside from that, I'm for it.
Thank you. Lonnie Clayton?
Australia, a number of years ago, passed a federal law, the federal law said, if you don't vote in a state or a federal election, the state and the federal government is going to fine you $100. And since then, Australia has turned in 95% voter participation. And now they really have a true democracy. They have a government that's being run truly by the people's voice. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I'm totally in favor of anything they would do to help bring this forward, mail-in, absentee, you name it. But the long and short of it is, if people just don't care, and how many people I've talked to over the years have said the same thing, oh, it doesn't do any good, my vote don't count. Well, you know, we were elected, we elected a president a few years ago with one vote. It might have been a Supreme Court vote, but it was one vote. So don't ever think for one minute that one vote doesn't count, because it does.
Thank you. Chris Vandenheuvel?
We have early voting, absentee voting, onsite voting, and you could have mail-in voting, I suppose, too, and you're still going to get 7%. It's not the question of how you vote, it's why people don't vote. I took my son to a city council meeting the other night, and he'll never go back again. And he thought, he said, Dad, you're nuts. Why would you want to do that? And it's politics as usual is what turns people off. And I might agree with Mr. Clayton's Australian proposal, as long as you have the option of none of the above. It's not the method of voting. It's why people are so apathetic. Politics as usual.
Thank you. Moving to District One, Joanne Dudley?
When my children were young, I used to make them go with me as I voted, and I would show them what I was doing, why I was doing it. We went through it completely, and they knew, and they still know to this day. I hope they take their children. I don't know. Many, most of us are probably working full-time, and it makes it much more difficult to get kids out, to show them what to do. For me personally, I would like the mail-in vote, and that's, even though I've always voted, been there, mail-in would be so much easier for me.
Thank you. Joshua Hernandez?
I assume a mail-in ballot. I, as most of the people on this panel have said, support anything that will get more people out to vote. The problem with that is mail is a dying form of communication. I believe, and my tech background tells me, that in 10 years, the mail's not going to be around, really. We need to get together with the Secretary of State's office, and we need to allow online voting. They've figured out how to do it with online voter registration. We need their help to figure out how we can do elections online. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Owen?
Well, any way that we can get more people to vote is great, but you know, in our case, District One, we've got, what, 9,000 registered voters, less than 900 vote. It's one of those things where, again, the apathy side of it, if it isn't my backyard, it didn't crack in my street, if it isn't an issue with my garbage pickup, or whatever the case may be, then I don't care. And we are, because this is a town that's primarily, we still have a bedroom town. People come here and they're getting home after it's dark, they leave before it gets light. And a vast majority of people are traveling to Santa Fe and Albuquerque to actually make a living. As a result, they're not really up to something unless it's a hot item for them. And you know, yeah, we have bad streets, yeah, we have a water issue, yeah, we have all these other kind of things, but it's not going to change, and I am busy and I've got dinner to make. So it's important that we educate people on the fact that it's when you don't vote, you vote. You're just still voting.
Thank you. So now to conclude tonight, we're going to have everyone, give everyone a minute to do a closing, closing argument, closing presentation, and we're going to start with District One. We're going to start with Joanne Dudley.
Okay. Where I missed out before, because I, that was the fastest minute I've ever had. I was a director of nursing, I worked with all kinds of people, not only the residents, but the staff, and I was very successful with that. I established medical scholarships, I arranged college to move into our town and offer courses so that these people wouldn't have to leave our city to go off for education. I established an Alzheimer's unit, I was an outstanding young woman of America, I was a Girl Scout leader, Sunday school teacher, quality insurance committee chairperson, I coached, I was a foster mom, I was the best mom ever, the best foster mom ever, the best grandmom ever, and the best nurse ever. And none of those was I ever ready to do before I jumped in with both feet. And I would be very willing, if you would be willing to vote for me, I would jump in with both feet and be successful.
Thank you. Joshua Hernandez?
So this evening has revealed that we have a lot of challenges as a city, and that's okay, because we're a young city, and we're a vibrant city, and we're a growing city. Now, I care about this city, and I care about my neighbors, and as I'm walking and talking to the people in my district, I care about them. I want to represent them and give them a voice in this city, that will bring my unique experience in the private sector, my creativity, my dedication and loyalty to bring, to make this city the best that I can. I humbly vote, or humbly ask for your vote on March 1st. Thank you.
Jim Owen?
What I bring to the table, obviously, and the reason why you should vote for me in this particular situation, is experience. Been there, done it, got the T-shirt, the whole thing. It's very important to recognize that experience does count for something, and having been involved in this community, heavily involved, not only in the private sector, but also in government for the last 24 years, it's probably appropriate to have that count for something. And when I go from door to door talking to people, they're impressed with that, the fact that I'm still willing to do that, because sometimes being a counselor is a real thankless job. You get to hear about dogs, and about streets, and sewers, and every other kind of thing, and they expect you to get it fixed tomorrow. And so I have to commend everybody on this diocese that basically is willing to step up and serve.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to District Four, and we'll start with Marlene Foer.
Thank you. I'm running because the city is like my third child. I conceived it, and I gave birth to it. Many years ago, in 1981, I have raised my children here, and my grandchildren live here. Those are my reasons for running. I want to thank everyone who has attended this forum tonight, because you are the voters, and it's you who will decide the future of Rio Rancho. I urge you to vote for the person who has demonstrated the experience to move the city farther. Vote for the person who has proven they truly care about the city and has the time and dedication to make all of that happen. Vote for the person who will be the adult in the room and be civil. Vote for Marlene Foer. Thank you.
Ron Hensley?
Thank you all for coming tonight. For almost 30 years in my professional life, I have been representing the interests of others, as a licensed engineer, as a licensed real estate broker, also being licensed for the financial institution division. I've worked with and for federal, state, and local governments, private clients, I developed working relationships with the Department of Transportation, the Environment Department, the state engineer, the EPA, and numerous other government agencies. In my four years working on the Utility Commission, I showed that I could work with staff and the governing body members to come up with solutions, to come up with standards and practices that we could all depend on. And now I'm going to fight for lower water rates and utility rates, and I think you need to ask yourselves, which would you rather have, a professional in politics or professional politicians? I'm a professional that must be in politics.
Thank you. Ryan Pata?
One of the greatest things I ever learned growing up was there's a difference between a boss and a leader. A boss will sit behind a desk and tell you what to do. A leader will stand next to you and say, let's do it together. I will not be a boss to the people. I will be a leader to the people. I will be a man of the people. That is the kind of person I wish to be. So I ask for your vote, or for any one in District Four on the March 1st election. I would like to ask that when you sit here tonight and you look at the candidates and you figure out who you are going to vote for, I ask you to look at the candidates and don't vote for someone that will give you just the standard or just the average. Don't vote for someone that will give you just par work. Vote par, because I appreciate quality and I look forward to creating a better future. Thank you.
Finally, District Six, David Bensy?
Thank you. A former mayor, a long time ago, his first name was Dave, don't remember his last name, once said the city of vision, he thought was a terrible moniker for the city, because he said it was such a burden. You know what? When I was on City Council, I embraced it, because you know what? We are good, we are the new in New Mexico. Some of the things I did on City Council, I sponsored applying the POW MIA flag here at City of Rio Rancho. Then Albuquerque did it, then Santa Fe did it, then the state of New Mexico did it. I sponsored grocery receipts investment program. That's how we got big box retail in here. Lozum Northern Premier Cinemas, and also the Chana Hills Retail Center, because that was a problem, we need to address it, I addressed it. Then I paid off the bond early and freed up $386,000 that went to police, fire, and EMS retirement, so we kept them here. The last thing I did was I sponsored the water reinjection reuse program that will extend the life of our aquifer for 50 to 100 years. Thank you for elected, I'm going to do more.
Chris Bazana?
What makes you think doing the same thing over and over and over again will bring a different result? We got to put new, fresh blood in a city council. New generation with innovative ideas, and I represent that. My experience working overseas represents our nation abroad. I have seen firsthand what it takes for government to help and assist and build a city, a community, a country. And I want to use my 21st century experience to bring the new way and leave behind the old way, and let's move forward together, and I will work hard for each one of you. And in District Six, I ask for your vote, Chris Bazana, on March 1st. Thank you.
Lonnie Clayton?
Well, I have not invented fire, I have not invented the wheel, but what I have done, I've served this city with integrity, with honesty, and with common sense, working with all the members of the City Council, the governing body, and also with the city staff, to make this a city to be proud of. If you choose to vote for me, I thank you tonight for your vote. Lonnie Clayton, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Chris Vandenheuvel?
It's nice going last to have a name like Vandenheuvel, because I always got to sit in the back of the class. I'm running for the City Council seat because I'm fed up with the politics as usual there, I'm fed up with the mismanagement of utilities, I'm fed up with politicians who come to places like this and they talk about people, and then they get elected and forget you. I'm running for the working families, for the retired households, and if you let me, you'll have a voice on the City Council that's not going to vote for subsidizing golf courses that you don't go to, I'm not going to vote for sewer plants that you don't need to spend the money on, and I am going to reduce your water and sewer rates. There's no reason why you'd have to pay 10 times what the people in Santa Fe pay for their sewer.
Thank you. Before we leave, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and I guess I also think that this group deserves a big round of applause, because it's so civil, it's so... This concludes tonight's forum. Also, I urge everyone to vote, I think this group...